Okay. We're gonna get started this way. Good evening. Welcome to the November first, two thousand and twenty-one Merrimack School Board Meeting. Please join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public participation. Welcome to tonight's meeting. We first decided at a recent school board meeting that we would now allow residents to submit public comments via email. To do this, you may send an email to publiccomment@sa26.org. Again, that email address is s-publiccomment@sa26.org. We do require your name and address for the record on such documentation. Based on the amount of information we received tonight, our goal is always to read off verbatim the comments as we receive them. If the comments become too heavy in volume, we will have to just not read public comments into testimony, but we would still post them to our public minutes. It's really an all or nothing proposition. It's only happened once to date. I'd just like to address this upfront in case we find ourselves in that situation. I do have a few ground rules in request to help make the public comments portion of the agenda most productive, and I wanted to address before we begin, public participation, and then continue with the rest of the meeting. Please remember, we are all neighbors and in the same community. Also, those of us on the board are also your neighbors and care about this community greatly. Please be clear and concise. Be sure to address your comments to the board. We ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or fewer. This will ensure that we have time to listen to all who wish to speak. This is also a business meeting. Please do not speak out of turn or interrupt people if this happens. I may just have to ask you to be quiet. Please be respectful in your comments, keeping in mind that we are all neighbors. As a board, we will be respectful to you, and we request the same in return. No swearing, please. When residents come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. If you are a student, please just state your first name only and that you are a student. There is no need to state your address. We do have, it looks like we have about a half an hour designated for public comments. If we do start to run over, we may just have to hold any public comments to the end of the meeting. And lastly, we will not allow any public disparagement of any of our district employees or our school board members. If any comments appear to cross the line, I will ask you to step away from the microphone. And I think that's all set. So we will also do what we've done in the past meetings. We will, I think we only have one public comment, so why don't we go ahead and address that upfront? We'll do that one first, and then we'll move to the microphone.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Joanne Grobecker, and I live at twenty-seven Craig Drive, and I am in support of a strong public education system that benefits all kids. I want to thank the school board for all their time and care they have put into this school year. I would also like to thank administration for working tirelessly to ensure all students in Merrimack receive a quality education. You are all appreciated. I have two daughters who attend Master Cola Elementary School, and they have had a great start to the school year, which is credit to Michelle Romaine, who works nonstop to ensure all students receive a quality education in a positive and caring environment. I would like to thank every single staff member and therapist at Master Cola and every school who show up every day excited to teach their students. Master Cola has managed to keep parent involvement even in a COVID year, having popsicles on the playground during open house and a Halloween parade outdoors that all parents could attend. I want to thank the district for the focus on literacy and handwriting as a way to address learning loss from a pandemic and strengthen kids' skills for all kids. I appreciate that Merrimack is moving towards using a handwriting curriculum. The program Handwriting Without Tears is being piloted in all elementary schools and select kindergarten classes. My kindergartner at Master Cola Elementary School has benefited greatly from the program and her teachers' purposeful instruction. Having a consistent handwriting program like Handwriting Without Tears will benefit all kids and decrease referrals to special education for occupational therapy, especially after so many kids spent a year on devices. I am pleased that Master Cola Elementary School has an existing phonics and phonemic awareness, and I'm always terrible with that word, sorry, program and fluency program in place K to four and structured literacy interventions for those who need extra support. I am hopeful that the district will follow Master Cola's lead in adopting a district-wide structured literacy program so all students can learn to read. In New Hampshire in two thousand and nineteen, thirty-eight percent of fourth graders were at or above the NAEP proficient levels. Source is nces.edu.gov, Nation's Report Card. I repeat that if you can hear it again, in two thousand and nineteen, only thirty-eight percent of fourth graders in New Hampshire could read proficiently. Merrimack's shift to having structured literacy in all elementary schools and not just Master Cola will benefit all kids by increasing math scores in middle school, decreasing the dropout rate in high school, and enabling our children to be successful and productive members of society. I am in support of a strong public education system that benefits all kids. I want to give a huge thank you to the teachers and therapists for all you do every day. Appreciatively, Joanne Grobecker.
Thank you, Shannon. All right, I'll open up the microphone.
Hi, Ken Martin, Woodward Road. It's budget season, it looks like, everyone's favorite time of year. Thank to you and the Budget Committee for going through this process, which is super tedious and not easy. Thank you for that. I just want to just make a point to that about prioritizing academic recovery programs and anything that's going to advance student learning over the next year to make up for the last year and a half. My son also goes to Master Cola and has had a great start to the year, and they've offered supplemental math programs, supplemental time on reading, phonics programs, and we've just gobbled them all up. It's been great, and I feel like that should be a priority for the budget looking at next year to make up for that lost time. A report came out in the last couple of years, a couple of months ago, actually, about drops in math, reading, and writing scores across not just New Hampshire but across the country. And I feel like this is a perfect time to reevaluate what has been working for us and what hasn't, so that those test scores can come up across the board, K through twelve. So, thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Heather Callahan, five King Henry Court. I wanted to talk about something that we talked about back in August. Part of the data about masks presented by Bill that you had incorporated to make the decision to mandate masks had to do with COVID transmission numbers in Florida schools that had already opened and were showing high rates of COVID transmission. Bill seemed to refer to this evidence that masks, or to this, as evidence that masks work since Florida had banned mask mandates. At the time, I personally never thought that you could draw those kinds of conclusions based on Florida's statistics, but now I do just feel that I have to point out, because I think it would be ridiculously horribly hypocritical if you were going to decide to go with a mask mandate based on Florida's numbers, to now not consider that by the end of October, Florida, which had banned mask mandates at the beginning of the year, actually had the lowest per capita rate of COVID-nineteen transmission. And many other states that have had mask mandates all along, like places in Michigan, Pennsylvania, New York, and Illinois, have rates of transmission per capita that are double and triple and even quadruple Florida's numbers. I also just want to mention that I had an acquaintance come and find me, like, search out for me last week because they want to, they've decided that they want to pull their daughter from the district, and they had me set up a tour for them this week at the homeschool learning center that my family joined when we withdrew at the beginning of the year. And I just want to mention that I see that other parents in Merrimack are seeing the new studies that are coming out from other countries about masks in schools that confirm that masks on kids don't limit the spread of COVID. And they're also seeing, like, the European CDC and the World Health Organization and other countries, health organizations and experts are at this point advising against masks on children, which is obviously in contrast with the U.S. CDC's guidance, which is one of the very strictest in the world, which I know you've heard me say before. But I also want to bring up one more thing that, maybe like an elephant in the room type thing, but that obviously, I would say, this issue of taking away parents' rights to make medical decisions for their children is directly relevant to another issue, these COVID vaccines that are about to be emergency use authorized for young children. And we talked about slippery slope in August, and these shots will be already mandated in California in order for kids to access the public education that they're supposed to be entitled to. And parents are worried here. I almost like not even, I've had a lot of conversations with parents about masks in Merrimack, and I don't, I can't even think of one that hasn't led, been led to vaccines by them. They, people are concerned, and they see that you've already made the decision to take away, like, the right to make medical decisions. So I just want to say that when we're talking about masks, we are actually talking about medical freedom and everything that goes along with that. And even if you think you're not having that conversation, you are, because that's what the parents are thinking about, mandating masks, mandating emergency use authorized COVID shots, mandating personal medical decisions. It's all infringing upon parental autonomy to analyze the information and make medical decisions for their own child. And so I think that you need to take a stand now and draw a line to defend medical freedom and the parents' right to choose.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Robbie Reisman, Iris Drive. Want to begin, again, just by thanking, again, the teachers and the staff this year. Again, my, my kid is having a really positive experience this year. Just being back in class has been fantastic. You know, whatever I've been doing to make that happen, I'm just glad, glad it's happening. And also wanted to, again, thank the school board. After coming to so many meetings this year, I'm beginning to see how much you guys do all throughout, so, and a lot of gratitude for that as well. And I also am psyched about the partnership with, potential partnership with Greater National Mental Health. Love how that could enable more access to some difficult access services for a lot of folks, which could in turn help keep folks better prepared to succeed in school, maybe even help with our dropout rate, keep people engaged. And I see a lot of positive results of, you know, measures like that that are designed to help kids and their families. And, and also love the structured literacy program that people have brought up. Again, more stuff I think is going to help keep people engaged, set us up for success. And, you know, it's just, you know, reading up on these things, all those little measures we're taking, some of the things we're looking at, I think, could be very helpful. So, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Kerdick. I reside at eleven Robert Drive. I don't have any paper. I don't have anything. I've been wanting to come here for months. I'm COVID crazy. Not COVID crazy, I believe in the science. Okay? My, I have three boys, two thousand and three, two thousand and eighteen, and two thousand and twenty-two. All of us are vaccinated, our choice, double vaccinated, as my seventeen-year-old says. My family, my son, my senior, had a positive COVID test last Saturday. It's the first positive COVID test my family has had to get, first COVID test my family has got to get. My son was in Germany for two years. Thank God. First, I want to thank all of you. You couldn't pay me enough. You did not sign up to make decisions like you're making. You made for budgets and everything else. I thought about running, but my son chose to go to Dairy Field for a year. Worst mistake of my life. I'm still paying for his mental health from the Dairy Field School. Anyway, so, and I'm sorry if I'm going to be long. I'm talking from the heart, but I've been wanting to come here. I will not put myself in a position where I feel unsafe, and I knew tonight what was on the agenda, and this place wouldn't be packed. So that's why I'm here tonight. And also, because I was supposed to get my booster last week, but I couldn't because I had to watch out for COVID and watch my symptoms. Anyway, my son, thank God for the special ed department at Merrimack High, because I had to drag him across the finish line. And thank God for the Impact Academy program that he was able to attend, and he was able to graduate with the Y-two-K baby class. Thirty-four kids did not graduate from that class. And I told my son, you have two credits to take second half of senior year. I love your traffic, but you're not going to pass the GRE. So he graduated, signed up for the Army, ended up going to Benning, ended up going to Germany. I did not see, and Germany was under NATO. He didn't have to get deployed, and this mom was really happy. But guess what? He couldn't leave Germany from February till April of this year because he had mask mandates, fines, curfews. He couldn't leave. I couldn't go see him. He was hanging by a thread. The only way he got out of Germany was to re-up, and now he's in fourth grade. Thank God. He'll go, he'll get deployed, he's a soldier. My oldest graduated in two thousand through, yes, I'm old, but I'm still very active in the community. I subbed in the district for four years at every school. I have friends in this school district. These teachers are working twenty-four-seven. They are amazing. I can name names. The things they do for our students makes me cry. I've had people come to my office, Kerdick Law Office, and copy things in the last few months because the copiers broke or they're home. I'm like, come over here. I've dropped food off to teachers. I've dropped pastries off to everyone. These teachers are working full-time. My problem is, it's a science. My son got COVID, tested positive. My Gavin has a fifteen-eighty on the SATs. I had to drop off a check for seven hundred and ninety-three dollars because he has to take eight AP classes because he is just amazing. And he's in classes with ten kids in it, eight kids in it, and he didn't feel good. Well, I thought, okay, he worked. He was up late till three, four in the morning because he had, he had to get his statistics done, and he didn't feel good. And then he had a fear, the next day he had a fear. I called that nurse, she must know, I called that nurse crying. I felt so bad. And I don't know, I'm not going to point a finger, I don't know where he got it, but I know where he didn't get it in my household, because I do not go, I do not go anywhere that's unsafe, and I will not eat inside. I eat outside, and guess what? You look at my Facebook, I'm cooking and drinking on my own time, and I'm lucky and blessed to be that. But the point of my long-winded story here is, so, so anyway, so he tested. So now we have to quarantine, which is fine, quarantine him from Saturday to Monday. He was supposed to return today. Wow. He currently has six AP classes at the high school, and he's taking two more on his own. Not my doing. It's Gavin's doing. But, so, what I don't understand is, I know we had remote, I know that the state, the district, you guys did amazing with Zoom calls. Dr. Campbell woke his butt up every Friday on a flex day and made sure they were good and talked to them. So I know you have the equipment. So, all right, every single one of his teachers, I got what he needed to do. Every single one of his teachers emailed him and told him, you know what? This is what you need to do. Don't worry about it. Don't worry. It also says if he wants to reach out, he can ask for a Zoom meeting. And every single one of those teachers would give him a Zoom meeting. But guess what? He's not going to ask for a Zoom meeting because he's not, he's not, he will take the timeout. What I don't understand is, we have him for conferences. We have extratech teachers in the district, right? I know Zooming, he slept, he barely had any symptoms because he's, he's had both his shots, and he's getting his booster. He doesn't have to now because he got an instant booster, is...
If, I just need to, if you can kind of start to wrap it up.
All right, so really quick, I will finish up. So I don't understand, so, I know you can't Zoom because he was sleeping for, till most of the time. Why can't we, because now he's missed five days of AP classes, okay? Why can't we tape lessons for students? Oh, yeah, I know why. Because what? Because someone is going to say, well, my son can't go to school today, so everyone's going to want that. But why can't my son or people that are, are safe, wearing masks, right? And I took out the top ten. The poor nurse had to call the top ten students because those are the kids who are in his classes. Those are the kids he is in band with. Those are the kids he eats lunch with. My question is, why can't someone, if the teacher is having a lesson, turn on the cameras that we do have and send the lessons to the child and they can do it? Because right now, five days of AP class lessons, that's a lot of work, and he was all ready to go to school today. Got up, he was having anxiety, and I've taken care of his mental health also, but he was, felt that he was so behind, and he didn't want to go in, and he was, he was fine. He didn't have symptoms since last Wednesday. But my question is, we take care of all these people that have been coming here for six months, not following, that's everyone's choice. We live in America. But you know what? My son was, he was, he probably got COVID from Merrimack High School, and it's inevitable because of all of us, he sees more people than I do in a year. But I don't understand why we can't give those students a lesson, because now he's caught up as much as he could, but he can't teach himself AP Calc, AP Statistics. He can't teach himself, and he's on the computer looking it up because he's not going to ask his teachers that have minimal amount of time to do stuff when they're so busy worrying about everything else, to, to call his teacher and say, can you give me a Zoom meeting in your one prep that you have a day? I don't understand why we have to reinvent the wheel when we have the, those resources to tape it. That's my thing. Like, to me, it makes no sense that now he's going to be behind because he, which I understand had to be quarantined and has to worry about making up AP lessons that the teachers could, like I said, we have the, we have the technology, we have the stuff. That's just my thing. I'm sorry. I'm just very emotional. This has really gotten me for loop, and that's why I'm here today, because I would not come, and I'm sorry. But I thank you all for everything. You guys are amazing, and our teachers are amazing, and I love Merrimack, but I'm not understanding why some, why some people are listened to and others aren't, and why you educators, you're educators, smart, believe in the science. I don't understand why we're not looking at the numbers because they're going up, and a lot of children are, I'm not, I don't have numbers. I'm not going to do numbers. You know the numbers. Thank you very much.
All right, next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Is there anyone else? Any other public comments in the email?
There was one that came in while we were sitting here. And my phone is waking back up.
And while you're doing that, Mrs. Kerdick, I'd like to thank your son for his service.
So, I, so our email is from Rachel Papke, and thank you for the phonetics, Rachel. You know, I totally slaughtered it last time. She's at sixty-seven Tinker Road. Good evening. I first want to extend a huge thank you to all of our teachers, educators, support staff, and administrative teams. I have a handful of examples where teachers and other staff members at both TFS and JMU's took a few extra minutes of their day to connect with not only my children but me, to ensure the needs of my children were being met from an emotional wellness standpoint and academic standpoint. It was amazing to see such a positive impact that each of those connections had on my children. Emotional wellness is an important factor for any child to be in the right state of mind to be able to progress and learn. To that point, I really appreciated the work that Fern Seiden and Heather Barker did to present what a partnership with the Greater National Mental Health Center would look like. I think this would have a positive impact for students within the Merrimack School District to have access to students, to resources that the GNMHC provides within school communities. I would also like to show my support for the teaching staff by asking that the school board put emphasis to the Budget Committee on the importance of sufficient funding for all teacher positions as supported by the Merrimack Teacher Association. Since the MTA Master Agreement with the school board expires in July two thousand and twenty-two, it should be one of the top priorities of the school board to ensure that the next agreement remains competitive in all areas of the MTA Master Agreement. This will not only ensure the MSD retains our highly qualified teachers, but will also attract top educators to bolster instruction throughout our district as vacancies exist. Thank you for your consideration, Rachel Papke.
Okay, last call. All right, okay. We will move on. We will, public participation, and we will move on to recognition. Are there any recognitions for this evening?
No recognitions this evening.
Next is the informational updates section, the superintendent update.
Matt and Kim and I continue to meet with the staff in each building as a prelude to the construction of the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget. We have gone on listening sessions to five of the schools. We still have the middle school to do that had to be postponed from an earlier time, but that is coming up shortly. We've had great conversations with the staff, and we have asked them what works well, what is very important to the, meeting the needs of our children, and what suggestions they might have for us to improve the, improve the system, to improve the academic and social emotional offerings to our students. And so they have, they have not held back. We've had wonderful, open conversations, and so I want to thank all the staff members for participating in those conversations. We attended a wonderful celebration at Thornton's Ferry last week, where the staff members who have been here for twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, and in some cases forty years were recognized and given their years of service pins at a special celebration with some treats for the staff, and I want to thank Julie and Michaela for doing a wonderful job in the recognition of the staff, and that included everyone. You know, we gave out pins this year for years of service, starting with, I believe it was twenty-five years, going up to thirty, thirty-five, and forty, and everyone was eligible for them. You didn't have to be a teacher or an administrator, because everyone matters in the school system. Everyone counts, and people who have exhibited a great degree of longevity in the system deserve to be recognized for their loyalty and their commitment to the students and to the taxpayers of the town. So it was a wonderful event. I want to congratulate also the high school administration and staff and students for a great Halloween homecoming dance and talking with Steve Clare, principal of high school. Over four hundred students participated and had a great, great time. That's the type of, type of event that builds a lot of spirit in a, in a school and filters down into the other parts of the school system. So we always like to see very successful events. And with the rising cost of energy, we have started sort of a campaign in the school system that have entitled Observe and Conserve. And this goes back years ago when I had meetings with a gentleman who was in the Department of Energy and who mentioned to me often that it is the human factor that is the most important in controlling energy consumption and therefore costs. And with the rising costs, we've sent out to the staff and have invited their input and suggestions and yours also for energy-saving measures that some represent common sense in some cases, but that in all instances help us reduce our consumption of electricity and, and heat, whether it's natural gas or fuel oils. So, looking forward to our staff participating and doing whatever they can to, to keep our energy costs as low as possible because we want to direct as many dollars away from overhead costs to the direct instructional process, and that's what, that's what this campaign is all about. And, and that is it for tonight.
Any questions or comments? Okay, I just wanted to say thank you for the distribution of the recognition. I think that's, sometimes it's the little things that mean a lot, and that was a really thoughtful gesture of appreciation for the folks that have, you know, been in our district for a long time. So, thank you for that thoughtfulness. Next up is the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
Thank you very much. We're getting hopefully closer to a post-pandemic arena whereby we can start to focus a little bit more on curriculum instruction assessment in a way that really addresses individual student needs and also addresses curriculum. So, when the schools shut down, we were amidst doing revisions with the health curriculum as well as the world language curriculum, and both of those committees have resumed, and they're doing a backwards design for presenting those. And they're doing a backwards design for presenting those curriculum proposals to the board sometime in the spring. So it's exciting to see that some of that work is happening. Regarding the pre-K through six, and in some cases, eight, we have been working on the essential learning competencies and will be presenting to the board at a future meeting with, around that. And relative to the essential learning competencies, those are the competencies that are going to drive instruction, assessment, and instruction. And being that, I wanted to mention that all, all elementary schools are working together in concert with the type of literacy instruction that they are providing and including the programs. So no school is isolated in terms of the phonetic programs, the handwriting without tears, the Hegarty, that phonics program that was adopted, the Fountas and Pennell program. And I meet weekly with the language arts coordinator so that we can be aligned, more aligned than different. So all students K through four in particular are receiving the same instruction, instructional practices when it comes to ELA. And that's, and there's more work to be done around that. And to that end, all curriculum revisions will stand on the stool of the Portrait of a Graduate, or sometimes called the Vision of a Graduate, which towards NIASK, the high school is, has started. But this Portrait of a Graduate will be sustained pre-K through 12. So it's what are the competencies and skills that we want all graduates to have when they do graduate, but also at the benchmarks anywhere along the way? What do you, what do we want our third graders to do? What do we want our sixth and seventh and ninth and 12th graders to do? What are the competencies that we want them to be working on that will help them to be successful? So we have been meeting a lot about that. And that will also drive some of our curriculum revisions that we will be working on. And I also wanted to mention that our assessment calendar, K through 12, has been uploaded to the district website for parents to receive, to view, to know when the different benchmark formative, summative assessments will occur. And we hope that that is helpful in knowing what's on the horizon, as well as an opportunity for parents to reach out to me if they have any questions or to their, the school principals. So that's it. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Jenna?
I just want to say thank you so much for those two things that you said in there that just resonate so deeply to me. For the alignment between all of the elementary schools and that ELA standards is huge. Being a mom of a child in elementary school, I hear parents talk about that all the time. Oh, we're doing this at this school and not at this school. And the fact that we're finally aligning that so that the experience at all of our elementary schools matches is huge. And, you know, in a, in a year when we have a lot going on and we're talking about a lot of different things, I don't want that to get overlooked. That's a huge thing that you've done already. And I just want to say how much I appreciate it. Also, that Portrait of a Graduate, I work in a district where every room that I walk into, I see the portrait of a graduate sitting right there. And every day I say, we need that. So to hear you say that it's coming, I could stand and applaud, truly. You know, I think sometimes we think the only thing that's getting done around here is masks or Grace Theory or whatever anybody thinks worth talking about, but it's on this, behind the scenes. But really what we're talking about is that stuff. And the fact that you're working on that stuff that is so pivotal to our district, I'm so grateful.
Any other comments? All right, Lori.
So Kim, my only question is, in the Portrait for a Graduate, is this the survey that every freshman, it's, it's a mandatory freshman on their career goals when they leave high school? Is that tied in with that?
That was not part of it. This has been worked on for a year and a half under Sharon Putney for the NIASK review. But we've taken it out of exclusively being the high school and looking at it, as I said, pre-K through 12. And parents were surveyed at one point, students were surveyed, leadership team was surveyed. So there's representation across the board. And then it will go to the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee to be vetted, the leadership team to be vetted before it comes here to the school board, which we're anticipating will be right before Christmas or right after Christmas. So stakeholders have, have weighed in on what are the competencies. It's, but it's unrelated to that survey.
Okay. And do you know, do we do do that? Do we, do freshmen take that career survey currently? Or do we, do we plan? Okay.
I can, I'll look into that.
Okay, that would be great.
There, there is one, could I, could I add a little bit? We had started this before COVID. So we had a couple of months into it with a core group of the superintendent, assistant superintendent, Kim Yu, were in the principalship back then. And so we had started the ball rolling and we had started discussions. Then COVID hit. And then that took us, I, took our eyes away from that. And so now what's Kim's doing with the team and everything like that and Bill, I think it's awesome that the ball's being picked up back again. Because back then, we recognized that that was critical to the part of what we do here. And it's going to define our educational goals into the future. So I just wanted to, to mention that, that we're, I appreciate these people working on it and picking it back up and going forward and taking the little hand-scratching notes that we had way back in the day and making sense of it, right?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, next item, Assistant Superintendent for Business Update.
Yeah, that would be me. I just want to say a big thank you to the town of Merrimack. The sidewalk on Woodbury Street is going really well. There's a, I'm just amazed watching the, it's not like I sit and watch, look out my window all day long and watch the guy with the big backhoe and whatnot. But he's truly an artist, the way they can move that thing around. And so that's coming along nicely. The, the roundabout or rotary, or whatever you want to call it, is, is absolutely complete. I even took my truck and drove it around, drowned it a couple of times. So when three or four times, my wife was getting mad at me. She says, stop it, we need to go home. So we went home. But that is just so wonderful, because that was such a, such a point of anxiety a lot of times. And so I just want to thank them for completing that and making it look really nice in the process. And it truly has slowed things down. And as people have acclimated to it, it's, it's almost a natural flow now. You know, I know it was new to Merrimack, it's not new to other communities, but, you know, and that's something to think about, because I'm foreshadowing a little bit, when that new development, Shannon, comes in from Old Blood Road. And we have the stop sign at the end of Madeline Bennett. And we had talked about doing the same type of treatment there before. So just keep how that works in the back of your mind as that development progresses and opens up perhaps next year. So right now, we have a stop sign and we have to stop. But there's no through traffic coming on Old Blood yet. So that's something to be talked about at some point in time. Other than that, we do have a lighting retrofit for LED lighting. It was approved in prior fiscal year that is moving forward. And so hopefully that will pick up and get rolling in earnest so we can start realizing and having the ability. It's, it's saving energy and it's the ability to dim lights in rooms. So teachers can set their own mood. It's going to help with learning, it's going to help with instruction, it's going to help with those kids who just can't deal with the fluorescent lights all day long. Lots of kids are like that, lots of adults are like that. So that's really important to do that district-wide. And that has kicked off finally, after the materials have started to show up, which was, you know, getting out of Los Angeles Harbor or Santa Barbara, wherever they come from. That was a long haul getting this stuff here. So we beginning that and it's, it's moving along and I'm really looking forward to it. So that is my update.
Questions, comments? I just have one, and that is regarding Old Blood Road. So I think the discussions of how that traffic was going to work go back seven to seven and a half years or even maybe before that. Does that have to go before the planning board again? Is there anything?
We were told the planning board had approved the plans as is. And the play will not go before the planning board again, and the planning board has spoken. That's from a meeting we had with Eileen Cabanelle and other town councilors, myself and Marge. And so be it. So it's kind of like an olive branch was given to us. Say, we'll see how it works. And if it's not working well, then maybe we'll think about doing adjustments. But there are no plans right now to bring it back in front of the planning board. And I know that was a concern about the board years ago. And now it's coming to fruition. So just to kind of bring that back, so you're aware.
I wonder if it's worth a conversation with Kyle Fox? Because certainly sometimes these traffic rules change, particularly in, you know, almost a decade.
We've had conversations with Kyle.
Okay.
We've had conversations with the contractor who is doing the work per the drawings that are already approved by the town. So.
Okay.
There's always room for another conversation. But all I'm saying is the die is cast right now.
Okay. No, I just, when you brought up the roundabout in that area, that kind of raised some questions and flags in my head that I wanted to just clarify, so.
Yeah.
Oh, Shannon?
Yeah, and I think something to clarify, when you're saying that this, you know, the traffic could be revisited, the traffic engineering study was in favor of not having that stop sign. That was done by the local committee that had the study and decided to go against their recommendations.
You had a design done by Steve Keach that showed a roundabout. I believe at some point in time, it was approved by the Highway Safety Committee. And then something changed.
Yes.
And they went with a design that was done by Ken Clinton of Meridian Construction. I remember his name. And so that was the way it was done, because the thought was Madeline Bennett Lane and Old Blood is the main throughway, and the school is just ancillary to that.
Correct.
You've got to drive it to take a look at it and see what you think.
I'll let you know.
Thank you. Sure you will, Shan.
All right. Thank you. Um, next is the school board update. What I have on that is the board has received a tentative schedule for the superintendent search. We're just finalizing those dates right now with our recruiter. And once we have those finalized, like I had mentioned a couple of weeks ago, we'll be sure to get those out on the website, just so people are clear on what that timeline looks like. So that's, that's what I have for the school board update at this time. Any questions, comments? Okay, next is the student rep update. My favorite part.
I would like to start by congratulating all the juniors and seniors that were accepted into National Honor Society this week, because it's a very big achievement. And I know all those students put a lot of work into school and they take a lot of pride in their grades and other various things involving school. So I want to say congratulations to them. And also, the Class of 2023 is currently having a Texas Roadhouse Rolls fundraiser. This is to raise money for the upperclassmen's prom that's being held in the spring. There is a link on the Merrimack High School Classes 2023 Facebook page to place an order. And if you're here in person, there are flyers on the table over there for, that have a QR code to place an order. All orders must be placed by Sunday. And pickup is on the Monday and Tuesday, right before Thanksgiving at the high school. So that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Lori Peters.
Is there a location for the pickup? Besides just the, like, where on the high school?
Um, I believe it's going to be in the CAF. So not exactly sure yet, but I think it's going to be in the CAF.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, we'll move on to number five, which is the old business, the Health and Safety Task Force update.
Just a relatively brief verbal update tonight. I continue to check the numbers from the Department of Health and Human Services every day, particularly the COVID map that has a variety of indices that measure all aspects of the, of the virus. We are still considered in a substantial transmission category. The latest is 314 cases per 100,000 population over a 14-day period, which does put us easily into the substantial transmission area. The statewide antigen and PCR test positivity rate over seven days is about 4.3% at the present time. So once again, the objective is to keep our students and staff in school and not looking to keep masks on anyone longer than necessary. But we want to make sure, because the numbers are up a little bit in the school system between numbers of cases, isolation, quarantine. We were down around 75 to 80 students being out for a while. We're back up to about 103 right now. So I do anticipate that will continue to fluctuate. But I'll keep you informed of any, any dramatic trends in anything, which I don't anticipate. But we'll continue to provide you with the COVID data at every meeting.
Thank you. Any questions? The next item, the school board's 2022-2023 budget message to administration. At this time, we're going to defer this to the 11:15 meeting. Some school board members are still collecting information. What to expect on the 11:15 meeting is each board member, member will read their own statement. I will have the statements from all of them also combined into kind of a consolidated statement with the key themes. What I would ask the school board members to do in the meantime is to go ahead, for those that have all of the data that they need, to please do send to administration so they have an idea, you know, where we're looking and what our items are important. And then on 11:15, we'll go through those publicly. Any questions there? Okay, number three under old business is early release days in January and March.
At our last board meeting, I presented you with a memo requesting approval to have two early release days, one on January 14th, the other on March 25th for mandatory trainings. At the time, there was some question as to whether or not the unions were aware and approved. And we have checked with both the MTA and Mesa. And they're on board and certainly approve of the early release days for, for this training. So I would ask your approval, which represents a change to the school calendar for this year.
Do you need a motion? Board Member Rothaus is asking if you need a motion, or are you?
I'll make the motion that we will have the early release days on January 14th and March 25th to have our staff trained in mandatory trainings.
A second made by Jenna Hardy. Anyone want to speak to that? Shannon Burns?
I guess the other question I would have is, would it not make more sense to close school on Election Day in April? And just have it all then? And because we always worry about schools being open on election days?
I guess my, my only reaction, Shannon, is that that would bump out our school year for another day at the end of the year, which I believe ends fairly late to begin with.
That's fine. But the thing is, by doing these early release days, it's not going to affect the calendar year, just instructional hours?
It will, we will meet certainly the number of days, because the, the dismissal of students will be after lunch, just after lunch, so it will count as, each day will count as a school day.
Totally fine. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
All right, thank you. That was a good question. Okay, we have a motion on the table. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, that's five zero zero. Thank you. All right, moving, moving on to new business, the year-end budget review for 2020-2021. I think you have some pretty good news for us, Matt. It's that time of year.
Yes, yes, I, yes, I do. Last year for 1920, you recall that was a somewhat abrupt ending due to COVID. We had a four point, almost a $5 million surplus at the end of the year. And that dropped the tax rate down 35 cents a thousand for the school rate. And, uh, that dropped the tax rate down thirty-five cents a thousand for the school rate. Uh, this year, I announced it, I think, a couple of meetings ago, we have, uh, an eight point one million dollar surplus to use to return the, to return to, uh, reduce the tax rate for the schools. And basically, you know, I was looking through the minutes of the meeting last year at this time. And last year at this time, we were introducing our real coordinator. You know, the A group, the B group, the C group, the D group, we were in hybrid, we were starting off. And I'm thinking about it, and I'm thinking, it seems like it was so long ago, at least for me. Maybe it's like difficult memories tend to put themselves further in the past than you like to acknowledge them. But as part of a function of what was going on, it created a surplus. And I talked to my, my audit team, and they're all over the state, they're in Massachusetts, they're in Rhode Island, they're all over the place. They have, they're, they have been seeing this phenomenon in every single district that they visit. No one has a tight surplus, no one has a small surplus, they all have large amounts of money that they couldn't spend. And part of that is due to, you know, professional staff. A lot of times, couldn't get teachers to be in the classrooms. You know, as of, as of this writing for, for certified staff, when I, when I first penned this thing, there was still eleven openings in district. That, that's a lot of people. You know, the support staff, uh, that, that was another million four that we had that went back to reduce taxes. You know, right now, we're looking at being short twenty-one powers, four custodians, four clerical, and two technology positions. And that's a, that's a lot of money. And so then you, you add that with the, with the ripple effect that that has through your system as far as how you deploy benefits. If you have less, less staff people, you're going to have lo, less people taking benefits. New Hampshire Retirement, Health Insurance, FICA, Medicare, everything is going to just drop down, because those are all based upon the number of folk you have working in your district and the amount of salaries. They're all driven by those two factors. And in addition, when we built the budget for twenty twenty-one, we built it off our guaranteed maximum rate. And the guaranteed maximum rate that we used to build the budget was nine point three percent. When the actual rate came in, it was five point two percent. And when you're talking about a twelve million dollar line item and you drop it by four percent, that's a lot of money. So that created an additional savings. So those are the real aberrations here. We didn't have any, we didn't have as much trash removal, because we didn't have enough kids in the system in school every single day creating, you know, refuse that had to be thrown away. We were eating in the classrooms, we weren't serving our full complement of meals, we didn't have a la carte items. We didn't have lots of things, which is going to go into play with how food service wound up at the end of the year. So we had that going on. We had out-of-district placements that were just, they weren't open. They were not open. You know, we're doing a lot of, and I was talking to Kim and Bill, and, you know, they have more information on this than, than I. But there's a heck of a lot of credit recovery going on this summer. There was a concerted effort to get people, get kids back in here and try and do a lot of, what was the term they used? Accelerated learning, which isn't just learn fast, it's just.
Learn what you need to know.
Learn what you need to know. Thank you, Kim, my trusty sidekick. Well, she, I'm, I guess I'm your sidekick, right? Is it the way it works? All right. So anyway, so during this summer, there's been an explosion of instruction to try and catch up with what this twenty twenty-one year brought us. And I'm glad we've got kids back in school. My God, am I glad we have kids back in school. You know, you can talk about masks all you want and the, everything like that, but we have kids back in school and it's working now. And so for that, I am exceedingly grateful. We still have positions to be hired, because it's not, it's not a desirable job for people, I'm getting out of college, to go into right now. They don't see it as something that is a long-term career possibility for themselves. So we've got some public relations to do. We've got to build ourselves back. It's like, I'm sure the police department is having the same issue with trying to find qualified officers. No one wants to do that job anymore for the amount of pay they're getting, you know? So it is, it was an entire ripple effect. It created a large surplus, which is good and not so good, because of what it, the product in the end that, that it gave us. But at least we'll be able to turn money to give relief to those in the town that deserve it and who sacrificed along with us as kind of a, hey, you know, you didn't get what you expected. We didn't give you what we, what we expected, and hence, your tax rates are going to go down. So hopefully next year, we'll be able to, to build a budget, look at it thoughtfully, and try and keep things somewhat level funded perhaps, or level services. But the services we had in twenty-one, twenty-two hopefully are going to be a lot greater in twenty-two, twenty-three, and even this year. So I'm not expecting this huge surplus at the end of twenty-one, twenty-two. And we're not going to budget as if this was our baseline and carry that forward. Because we want to budget for full staffing, for the full amount of powers we have, for the full amount of technical people that we didn't have, for the full amount of clerical people, for the custodians that we didn't have. Those guys have been working like troopers to try and get these schools clean and sanitized and fogged and everything like that. Short-staffed, on overtime, is tough. And so as a result of that, you have this surplus. And this, one other thing I'd like to, to point out, we did have to transfer a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to food service, because the reimbursement from the free meals was like three dollars and fifty-three cents. And without the volume that we normally have, and wealth, without the access to a la carte items, especially at the high school, that's where the money comes in, it just wasn't enough to cover. So the general fund had to cover a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that cost to break even. And so that's an important thing to note. We're tracking the sales now, things look much better. But still, it's in that realm where we're going to have a couple of lean years, because we used to have maybe fifty, sixty thousand dollars in surplus from the food service department. We'd let that grow over a couple of years, it would build up to be around a hundred and ninety, two hundred thousand dollars. And then we would look at capital improvements that need to be made in the food service area, like a new freezer, like a new oven, like a new whatever. And then we buy it from the food service surplus, which they can retain. Now, this is another conversation I had with Mr. McCally across the way. He's not there now, he's probably at home, and I'm sure he's watching this meeting, maybe not. But, you know, it's too bad we couldn't take times like these and retain a certain percentage of surplus and put it aside to avoid the peaks and the valleys. I've been talking about this for fifteen years now, ever since the law was enacted that allowed school districts to retain surplus for stat, tax stabilization reasons.
No, you, you mean s, school districts or the town?
School districts. You have to have a warrant article on your ballot, it has to pass. Bedford has it, Londonderry has it, Litchfield has it, all, Amherst has, Sohegan, they all have it. So they can take in times like these, who knows, we may, we may never have times like these again. You can take a million and a half, put it aside, retain it, and use it for tax rate stabilization. I know in talking with Paul, he has surplus. He's probably gonna, because we're giving so much back, he's going to be in the position, because we work together. You know, people will think that the town-school don't work together, but we work together. He may look at this as an opportunity to build up his surplus, because we have so much, to avoid the giant dip for next year, and then the corresponding spike for the year after. So, I know it was more than just a budget review, because I kind of pontificated a little bit, but this is basically what happened. It was people not being able to hire people. And, you know, we still delivered a product. Was it, you know, the best? No, I don't think anybody would say that. Are we trying to do credit recovery? Are we trying to do other supports for kids? Are we trying to get kids back to the way they should be? Absolutely. And it's going to play out over the course of this year, and we're going to get back to being what we are, which is a damn good school system. And so this is just one of those things that happened because of COVID. The only bright side is, your rate's going to dip down a little bit. Got to ask yourself, was it worth it? I don't know. So, that's just my little.
Port, uh, Shannon Burns and then Lori Rothaus.
Um, I know it's not about the reduction, but you opened the door, so I'm going to walk through it. And that is, if we did retain the surplus, we as a school board, unlike the town, we the board would not be agents to expend, correct? It would be the state.
You would have to go to the Commissioner of Education to allow you to spend that money. You as a board would not be agents. The Commissioner of Education, Frank Edelblue, would be the one to say, yes, you can release surplus, or yes, you can spend surplus, not up to you.
Right.
Up to him.
And there are very specific things that you can actually petition for.
Yes.
And it's very limited. And I think, I will say, we've talked about this in the past, so I don't want it to be that we weren't being responsible about dipping and spiking the tax rate.
Absolutely not.
It was us realizing that we are not being agents to expend. We could not assure that we could be taking your money, you could be setting in an account, and we could be declined the opportunity to do that by the Commissioner of Education at his discretion. So that's why we did not want the state playing with local taxpayer dollars. And that's, I want, I just wanted to frame that out, that, that, that's why I was always hesitant to even engage in that conversation, because look at the, uh, commissioners we've had in our twelve years together.
Right.
And you can't get more different. So we don't know what we'd be getting. It's the devil you don't know.
That's correct, but just, I'm glad you walked through the door, you know? It's my, if, if, if I hadn't said anything, then I would be, you know, irresponsible and just putting this, shining this little light on this little thing, this little issue, that's all.
Lori?
Shannon answered my question.
Okay. No, it's, it's very complicated stuff, um, when we get into our budgets and how it impacts the tax rate. And I think a couple of years ago, you did a little video, um, about the tax rate.
Do a video, yeah.
So.
My hair was darker then, too, you know?
Well, you know, you might want to share that out to the public.
Okay.
And get that, you know, push that out there. So, I mean, I think it's, um, you know, for those who maybe watched it then, it's always good to get that refresher. But as we're going into budget season, I think, um, you know, really taking a look at spelling out that budget process um, in a very, I think even as we kick off budget officially with the books and everything in early December, to really have a walkthrough of what that budget process looks like. Because it gets complicated in how the budgets, you know, goes to the school board and then the budget committee, and then there's the warrant articles, and then we have the deliberative session, which is part two of the public meeting.
Right.
And so I think that, I don't, I can't think of a time that we've really walked through that for the public in great detail. And we also have a couple of new board members as well. Um, so I think that, you know, if we can just make a note to do that, I think that's probably.
Yeah, I remember, I remember when we had it, uh, I can't say enough great things about Nick LaValle, Merrimack TV, who helped, who held my hand and made me feel comfortable in front of the bright lights, you know? And then Justin in the back room, you know, who just did a tremendous job. So we've got great people who work here, who support us, and, you know, maybe it's time to do another go. And I'll make sure my, my makeup crew is with me at that time.
And then, um, Hollywood, here you come.
Hollywood, here I come. I always wanted to be on stage, you know? Thank you very much for, for listening to me, and I hope you don't mind the little humor injected into things, just to keep things live.
Any other questions for Matt? All right. Um, the next up there is the, under new business, um, the budget preparation meeting dates. Um, Bill?
Yes, just, just very briefly, and Matt, these are the dates that you will have an opportunity to, to sign, I'm sure. About two weeks from now, and actually two weeks from tomorrow night, is the first budget committee meeting. And followed by, um, the first school board budget review session on Monday, uh, December twentieth. So that we've combined, um, the thanks, thank, uh, thank you to Matt and some of you. We've combined the dates of both the school board budget meetings and the budget committee meetings onto one sheet. And we look forward to engaging in those conversations, because it's very important that the taxpayers of the community understand what we do, how we do it, and why we do it, and, um, what kind of financial commitment it takes to support an excellent, uh, school system. So we, we look forward to that, that public engagement.
Can you just get those dates to me, so I can just make sure we don't have any conflicts, you know, with any board schedules and whatnot? Oh, I'm sorry, oh, yeah.
They're in the, yeah, they're in the packet, yeah.
Never mind. Okay, number three on new business, um, the two thousand and nineteen Youth Risk Behavior Survey results. Um, this is something that I specifically asked for, um, especially, I mean, this goes back to two thousand and nineteen. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey is something that's done every few years, and I don't recall that we've had those results shared in quite a while. So I thank you for actually, um, putting it on this next meeting, because I think it really, it's, I can tell you from my private experience, um, it's not a positive thing. I mean, you, there's a lot of information that, um, can be very concerning. And so to review this, I think, is really important in light of COVID, um, an increased social, emotional, um, aspects of students. And so, um, and particularly before budget season is another reason, um, that I asked. But most importantly, we just hadn't, we haven't heard this for a while. One thing about the survey that I did want to point out is many surveys do have an exemption, a parental exemption, but the federal government does not allow it for this particular survey. Um, so students do take it, um, and I think, is it every three years?
Every two.
Every two, okay, thank you. So I will go ahead and turn it over to you, but I wanted to provide a little background.
Yes, this is a, um, a survey that, uh, as I just mentioned, is given every two years. It was, uh, started back around nineteen ninety by the Centers for Disease Control. And in New Hampshire, it is administered through the collaboration of the Department of Health and Human Services and the Department of Education, uh, administered to high school students. And in Merrimack, in two thousand and nineteen, there were nine hundred and fifty-one high school students who took the, uh, took the survey. What it does, uh, and seeks to do, excuse me, is to determine the level of drug use, alcohol use, um, relational issues such as dating violence, uh, risky behavior, sexual behavior, suicide, sadness and helplessness, tobacco use, alcohol use, um, habits of using a vehicle, uh, physical inactivity, bullying and electronic bullying, and other health risks. Um, and so it, it breaks down the categories, it, it gives you a longitudinal, um, series of data that allows us to take a look over a period of time what the trends, uh, look like. Uh, now, some of the data goes back to two thousand and eleven in Merrimack, some of the questions are new. And so there is only one data point from the two thousand and nineteen, uh, survey. Keeping in mind also that. Keeping in mind also that the next administration of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey will be this upcoming spring of 2021, and that will be the two-year mark. But some of the, some of the points that I'd like to make is going, going down by the general categories of drug use. We're encouraged by the fact that in the 2019 survey, the use of prescription medications, the unauthorized use of prescription medications by high school students has, has dropped. The use of more serious drugs, methamphetamines, Oxycontin, heroin, seems to have dropped somewhat. The use of marijuana is up a little bit, mostly I think because of the loosening of the laws with respect to marijuana. It's interesting that the percent of students who used marijuana in the 30-day period prior to when this survey was administered in 2019, compared to 2015, had increased from 25.8% to 32.4%. So it, whether it's recreational in nature, medicinal in nature, you know, that, that doesn't distinguish, that's not distinguished in the, in the survey. But the percent of students, well, the interesting observation also is the percent of students who reported that their parents would be, parents would consider it wrong or very wrong to use marijuana, decreased from 2015 to 2019 from 84% to 77.1%. So a little bit more acceptance, whether that's good or bad. I'm not making, making a judgment of that, but there seems to be a little bit more acceptance of the use of marijuana. In terms of alcohol, the percentage, percentage of students who had the first drink before the age of 13 increased from 10.2% in 2015 to 11.8% in 2019. So that's of, that's of concern. I think sometimes from experience, the, the issue of alcohol abuse is every bit as serious, if not more, than controlled substances and controlled drugs. It's, is very difficult for students and adults with that fact who become addicted to alcohol, to, in some magnitude. I've seen it happen many, many times. And both students and adults struggle significantly. Just one of the data points, percent of students who usually got alcohol, they drank from someone giving it to them, increased from 35.9% to 38.6%. So they're getting it from other places, because the data also indicated from student responses that the number of students who felt it would be easy for themselves to obtain alcohol dropped from 37.8% to 33.6%. So oftentimes, as we know, students are getting it from other people and other places. We want to take a look, continue to take a look through our wellness program about dating relationships, because that continues to be of concern. Percent of students who reported that someone they were dating or going out with purposely tried to control them or emotionally hurt them, that was one data point in 2019, but that was 26 and a half percent, which is concerning. And so one of the things that we need to work on and continue to work on is discussions with students with programs about healthy relationships. And particularly those in dating relationships with others, because we've seen it many, many times in terms of the controlling nature sometimes of an individual and the attempt to emotionally hurt or scarren an individual. So that, that's of great concern, and we want to keep a very careful eye on that. And there's where I will be meeting, and Kim will be meeting also and I with Fern Seiden, Director of Student Wellness, to address all of these issues. I know she has taken a look at the survey results, has provided some feedback, and this will be a topic of discussion as we go through the, through the budget process, not only next year, but in, in future years. The category of suicide, sadness and helplessness also demonstrates concern that we have in that the percentage of students who ever felt sad or hopeless for a period of time during the 12 months prior to the survey increased from 32.9% to 39.3%. The American Academy of Pediatrics recently published a, a report that's online, very relatively brief, but they're extremely concerned about the increased incidence of mental health issues among children. We've seen this over the last 19 to 20 months during COVID, when physician after physician would say, you know, we're, we're treating relatively few cases of influenza and the common cold, because people were wearing masks, but the, the number of cases of children expressing anxiety, symptoms, depression, sometimes suicidal ideation is, has been increasing dramatically. And that's of great, great concern to us. The percent of students in the 2019 survey who ever seriously considered attempting suicide grew slightly from 19.9% to 20.3%. And the percent of students who attempted suicide during the 12-month period prior to the survey in 2019 increased from 7.6% to 8.4%. Now, those percentages may seem low in terms of a raw number, but those are human lives. And whether it's one or 101, it's too many. And so we need to continue to work with our students in terms of all, all types of mental health issues and alternatives when there is a feeling of, of helplessness among our students. Tobacco use is the next category. And interestingly, that seems to be down in terms of conventional cigarette smoking, but what is up and up significantly, as we know, is vaping. And so, we need to continue to work with students, because there are certainly dangers associated with that. So we will, I'll be meeting with the high school administration and the middle school, but primarily high school level, in terms of what we can do to, to continue to increase our efforts to discourage vaping, not only in school, that is done illegally, as we know, but outside of, of school. And the last category that I presented you some information on is bullying, electronic bullying, and fighting. And the percent, interestingly, the percent of students who ever bullied on school property during the 12 months prior to the survey in 2019, compared to 2015, dropped from 25.9% to 22.8%. So I would like to think that some of the programs that many school systems across the country have implemented with respect to anti-bullying, encouraging more and more students to be upstanders instead of bystanders, okay? And, and doing something about the bullying issue, I think that's beginning to pay off. And so, as you can see in the nature of the report that's in your packet, there's a lot of, a lot of data in here. I haven't captured everything, but tried to capture those that we think are the most significant in terms of health and safety risks to students. So where do we go from here with this, with this data? Well, we, as I said, we continue to talk with the Director of Student Wellness, Fern Seiden. We meet with the leadership team continually to talk about what we need to do and how we need to do it to improve our offerings, our efforts to students, to make sure that they engage less in risky behavior, whether it's outside school, inside school, or both. And so, I'd be glad to answer any of your questions. I don't have all the answers, but it's a starting point. And this is a report that needs, needs to be presented to you every two years and needs to be presented to the public every two years and to our staff.
All right, thank you. And before we get started, I just wanted to say, this is, it's a pretty thick document, but it is out on our website for anyone that's listening. And also, it's on the Facebook feed as part of the school district packet for tonight's meeting. So if it's, for those of you that just want to flip through this and really get into the detail, it is out there for your review. So we're gonna go, we're gonna start with Lori, and I'm just gonna move across this way, because I think you all had some comments or questions.
So I, I think that it was really timely that last week we talked about our partnership with the Greater National Mental Health based on information that may be old information, but, you know, it's still relevant information for us. Again, you know, it's really important to continue health education, you know? It's all about prevention, education, intervention, and then obviously treatment. And then the only other question I would have is, you know, what are the protocols in the middle school and the high school? If a student is depressed or has anxiety, or other students know that there's a student being bullied, is there, you know, a guidance counselor available on demand? Like, you know, it's like, do you have to fill out a form and say, I'd like to see my guidance counselor as soon as possible? How long, you know, is there a place that they can go and say, I need to see a guidance counselor right now? And, and, and I don't know the answer to that, but that's what I would say is so critical. It's a critical piece for all of this.
May I just say, that's, that's an excellent point, one that stressed for several years now, in that students in, in crisis don't, can't wait.
Can't wait.
That we need to have, particularly at the high school,
Right now.
A little triage center to address student, students in crisis immediately.
And, and then also like the protocols. So you have a student that has anxiety or was suicidal, and they're coming back to school, you know? Who is going to be that check-in person that's gonna check in with that student every single today? Just to, you know, ground them, like, how are you this morning? How are you later? And, you know, what does that look like? Are we gonna do that for a week? Are we gonna do it for two weeks? And, you know, just having those really strong systems in place of support and wraparound for all kids that need that support.
Sure, Kim?
Thank you, that's a really good point. And our school counselors and guidance counselors have developed a suicide protocol intake. So any student that comes forward with any kind of ideation or is reported to the school counselors with any kind of ideation, they're brought in, parents are contacted, they go through this whole screening that has been vetted by psychologists. And then there's a mandatory return upon seeing a psychologist, counselor, social worker, or doctor before returning. And then that point person again is the school, the school counselor. So we have a really tight system in place.
I like that, I'm glad to hear that.
Thank you. Are you all set, Lori?
Yes, yes.
All right, Shannon?
I just wanted to frame out how you introduced tonight's agenda item and then ask a couple of questions. You mentioned we haven't done this in a while. So the thing, the facts that I want to lay out is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey is done every other year on the odd year. On the even year, usually around March, is when we will actually review the Youth Behavior Risk Survey. So we have done it every two years, except for March 2020. And it probably sounds familiar to you, because the world shut down. So with that, we did not neglect, I just want to make that clear. There was no neglect of reporting on that. There was no real opportunity to address it. So it's been done every two years since I've been on the board, and I'm sure longer. It was a huge part of our safeguard committee and evaluating that. And it was really their charge going forward on how they were going to really work that committee to maximize the grants that we had. So that said, it's an odd year. So what has happened, because we didn't have COVID, or because we, we did have COVID, I assume we didn't have a Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which I believe happens usually in the spring, if I'm getting that correctly. And then they take time to evaluate the, so is there a scheduled Youth Risk Behavior Survey for 2021 that would update the data and be more contextual to the, I'd say the, the shifting, really shifting environment in which these kids are living, and, and these kids are, are really struggling. So I think that something held now is probably coming from a very different place of what was studied in 2019, which you just reported off. So I, I'm just curious to know if you know when we're doing this again and, and when we could get that reporting back to, to, to evaluate it.
The 2021 survey will take place, usually it's in the March, April timeframe.
Right.
Right.
We were just coming back.
It takes, it takes a number of months for the results to come back, so.
So did we actually hold the Youth Risk Behavior Survey in March and April when we came back to school?
I'm sorry, Shannon?
It's an odd year, so we would have done it March or April, you're saying. So did we do the Youth Risk Behavior Survey in 2021?
No, it's, it's coming up, no, it's actually.
It's 2022.
No, they, they, I believe were suspended.
That's what I thought, right?
Yes, it's coming up this next spring.
Okay, so then we're gonna be doing even year evaluation and odd year reporting. Okay.
So it will be a while before we get the updated results.
Well, it sounds like it'll be a while before we actually collect the results to update.
Exactly, right.
So there's gonna be a gap from, again, we did this in 19, so we're not gonna do it again until 2022, and that's gonna be quite the gap of, of your subject set.
And then four, so it'll be about four years before we get the results.
But it's circumstantial, but we haven't had it, because we haven't been able to really do that. So I just wanted to make that clear, that that's not something that we take lightly and put to the side and didn't address in our agendas as a board. We did. But we had, March 2020 was when we had to shift and go remote and, and focus our, our agendas on, on how we're going to accomplish education, so. So just wanted to make that clear. So honestly, it's, I, I really, it's like, it's again, almost two and a half year old data that we're asking questions on. And I think what I would have to say is, in that time since we even took that data, how much work this district has done in social, emotional learning and the infrastructure that's in place. And the, you know, obviously the next steps with Massawa Mental Health. I think that that's exactly, we're taking data and we don't sit on it. We listen to it, we, you know, and we strategize. And that's always been the case, and we're just doing it in different ways now. And I think that that's something that Merrimack should be very proud of. So it's, again, refining and then having, finding additional and better resources to do it even better, because they're available to us now. So, you know, doubling down and curriculum being a big part of that. So starting young, and of course, our social, emotional learning and coping skills start in the elementary school. I know that we've done stuff at the middle and the high school, even though the curriculum didn't design that to just address those students that didn't have the opportunity to see that curriculum in their younger years. So the work is being done, I think this is why the work is being done. So this kind of validates all the requests we've had, the presentations we've had, the work that's been done by this, by the SOCal's committee as well. And, and thank you for their work, again. But the work is never over. I think that's what this report also shows us, that the data shifts, but the work is never over. And, and I'm glad that we as a district have been and continue to be committed to doing that work.
Thank you, Shannon. Jenna? Lori Peters?
So Shannon asked some, some of my questions, so thank you. But one of my concerns is, and, and you kind of hinted at it, Bill, with the new report from the American Academy of Pediatrics, the data since August 2020 is pretty frightening in, for, for teens. During and, and even now, a lot of schools face to face, the, the data is, is scary. And while I know we're gonna have to wait months to get this survey accomplished and then the data harvested and, and presented, I know we have good strategies. I know we have good safeguards. But do we have a pulse of what's actually happening? Do we have a sense of where our students are on the whole? Because I'm concerned that, even looking at this data that's nearly three years old, there, it's very likely it could be double these numbers. And I'm just wondering, is there a way that we, we can find out the pulse of our students on, particularly on the suicide sadness and hopelessness issue?
This is one of the topics, in fact, is on, that's on this Wednesday's leadership team agenda for discussion. We will, we'll talk with the counselors in each of, each of the buildings also to, to develop a better understanding of where, where our students are, knowing that we don't, you know, we don't have any really definitive data, but anecdotal information, the conversations with students between guidance counselors and administrators, behaviorists, et cetera, is extraordinarily important. So I'll be glad to report back to you where, where we think we are at this point in time with respect to some of these behaviors, particularly with respect to anything of helplessness, suicide ideation, et cetera. Because that's, that's not only an, an issue that's limited to high school students, as we know, it's, it's going down to lower grade levels that is of great, great concern. So we're going to have that conversation on Wednesday of this week. We start that conversation then, and then I'll be able to report back to you where we think we are in relation to what the 2019 data indicates.
I just stress one more thing. So if I can just stress one more thing. So when a student goes into guidance, so you might not know what the issue is. So if you're saying you know what the issue is, then they're going to get the wraparound. But that student is going to self, you know, they're going to report for theirselves or they're going to report for one of their friends. If there could be something on that guidance slip that says, this is an emergent, like something, because you're not going to know that information every single time. And that's, I just don't want someone not to have that immediate assistance or help.
Kim?
And we do have great partnership with, you know, our police and fire in town and have utilized them in the past. But I also wanted to comment that it's often the teachers who are doing the referral of a student to, to the counselors and really trying to maintain that, the dignity, the confidentiality of, you know, the student and make sure that there's not over interviewing that's taking place, that it really falls into the hands of the experts who are doing the evaluation of a student. And I also wanted to just report out to you that Heather Barker, myself and Fern Sidon just got back from two days of a, a conference on social emotional learning and wellness and that with national presenters that are really talking about certain, certain like data warehouses that we could use for, you know, collecting anecdotal evidence of student wellness and also looking at some book studies and looking at the nine through 12 curriculum. So the seriousness of this doesn't, does not fall, you know, it's, we live it every day, we see it every day with students who are dysregulated. But to your point, Lori, we have to be able to tweak out what is dysregulation, anxiety, and what is true sadness and ideation. So that's the work that we're going to be embracing.
Lori Peters.
I, I noticed at the end of the summary, you talked about having this for your leadership team. Are the teachers going to get this? Because your, the teachers are frontline and this, this is golden for them.
Thank you. I presented that in the summer to the leadership team and asked them to share because these are, this was actually from some work that I did in, in another district with public safety officials and based on FBI reports also that these are the behaviors that are extraordinarily important for us to keep an eye on day in and day out. Because many of them precede more serious behaviors and school tragedies. And what I've often said also is, these are behaviors to not only pay attention to with students, but to staff who perhaps might be in a contentious relationship or a nasty divorce or, or separation. And so we want to, we want to be able to make sure that we can appropriately identify when something's going on in a human being's life, whether that person is three years old or 103 years old. And so I, I find that list to be very, very helpful in terms of what to look out for. And if you look at most of the incidents of school violence and workplace violence, somewhere, one of those behaviors is in this, this list. And so that's what we need to keep our eye on.
Jenna?
I just want to add that, you know, I'm going to say this in my budget message, but, you know, as Fern and Heather were here presenting sort of the beginning of the partnership with, you know, Greater National Mental Health and how that's going to hopefully progress and then these other phases of these SEL, you know, I'd like, you know, like, like you said, I really do think like double probably a lot of these things we're going to see when we go back and get this data, considering the impacts that the pandemic has had. And I'm hoping that in our budget that we can explore more grants. I know that we do a lot with grants, but grants like Project Aware and things along those nature, along that nature, that we can capture the ability to move faster along that SEL track that we're, we're headed down, to accelerate our progress along those lines where we can get SEL interventionists at each building, like Lori said, doing check-in, check-outs. Check-in, check-outs are so huge because they provide that person-to-person daily contact with a person that can say, how are you today? And they catch it because there's a safety net and you identify the at-risk kids. I mean, this is what I do. I sit in these meetings and we say, these are the kids. And these kids come to us. And when I'm doing it in elementary school, right? So you're catching them then when they're feeling lonely and sad. I can't tell you how every single day the things I hear at elementary schools will break your heart, like every day. And it's so hard to know that those problems only grow exponentially bigger. So I really, you know, people who say SEL isn't necessary in school, spend five days in school and you will never say that again. It has to happen. And, you know, I think there's a lot of grants that can help us, but I'm going, ahead of my budget message, I'm just going to say it every time, we have to do more. And we don't have to do more, we have to do more because kids are important and they matter. And they can't learn if they're stressed and feeling overwhelmed. And we have to address those needs before anything else. And it's how we catch some things that other people might not be catching. And it have to be more people looking specifically just for those things. So that's just my two cents.
And may I just say, I want to thank Kim for reminding me that, you know, the, the day that you just, one of the days that you just approved, January 14th, was suicide prevention training, which is extraordinarily important.
Any other comments or questions? All right.
I would just like to say that I agree with all of the board members, especially as a student during this time. Teachers are trying so hard to make sure that we are okay and that we are keeping up. And I greatly appreciate that, but I think it would be good for students if there could be a way implemented that more teachers would know to check in. Because a lot of students do struggle with stress and, and anxiety and other mental health issues that seriously impact their work and how, how they, how they act within a school setting also. And I had one teacher last year, he was the most amazing teacher ever. I love him so much. And every single day, we sat down in his class and he would take like five or 10 minutes to check in with how we were actually doing. And I have to say, that took so much stress off of everything that was happening last year. And if that was reiterated to more teachers, that it does help the students to do something like that, I think it could be very beneficial district-wide.
All right. That's really wonderful, Caitlin. Thank you for your feedback. We always welcome it and it's always good, so.
Yeah, may, may I just say also, one of the greatest allies that we all have in trying to deal with these issues are the, the students themselves. Because we know, all of us who have had high school age students, they care extraordinarily deeply about each other and, and want to take care of each other. And so, you know, we, we always look for their help in terms of bringing as much wellness to the student body population as possible.
And I just have a couple of comments, just to reinforce, I think pretty much everything was covered that was on my mind. I would just say that I wanted to use an analogy that I've heard Board Member Rothaus use with me before, and it is about kind of three legs on a stool. So you've got students, you've got the school support and the family support. And it's important that everything works together. And I know that, you know, I think a lot of the conversation was about how we manage it at school, but a big part of that is communication with families, it's partnering with families. And, you know, and the, you know, the students are their own voice and advocate too. So those three prongs in a stool, which she tells me many times, you know, is a great analogy, I think, for understanding that relationship. So I thank you for that and I wanted to point that out. And secondly, you know, you had said something earlier, you know, we need to be concerned about our teachers and staff now too, you know, now more than ever, I would say, because of, you know, things going on in their own homes because of COVID. I know there's a lot of burnout, I mean, just the lack of, what you had said earlier, Matt, the lack of resources, the lack of subs. I know that we have administrators that are subbing in classrooms, you know, because there's no one else. And so this would be a cry out too, that if, if there's any folks at home that might have the ability to sub, you know, to at least on the short term or has some time looking for things to do a couple of days a week, to check out the website and step in if you can. Because I do know that we, you know, have significant sub vacancies and that certainly drains on the emotional health of our teachers and our students and our staff. So I, I just thank you for the report and thank you for all that you do.
Okay, moving on to new business, other. Is there any other new business that we needed to bring forward tonight? Seeing none. The next item is number seven, the approval of the minutes. We're going to defer this also until the 15th meeting. And then we move into number eight, other. One is committee reports. Any committee reports?
I just have one. Parks and Rec on October 30th, because of the rain, they had to change the rain date for their general event, which will be on November 6th. It will be from 2:00 to 5:00, which will be games. 6:30 will be fireworks. It's all on the website, but there was a change just because we had so much rain on Saturday.
Jenna?
I went to at least part of the CIA meeting. I had a conflict that day, but I, I did go to part of it. I think, Kim, actually you covered some of it in your superintendent update. But also, I just want to let the community know that there is a rubric when it comes to adopting new curriculum or technology, whether it, I don't mean even big technology, I don't mean like hardware, I mean like software or using things, something like Pairdeck or whatever. It goes through this whole rubric, through the committee, through people. It's no teachers just grabbing curriculum off of here, there and everywhere and just putting whatever in there. And I think sometimes, you know, not knowing how that happens, people can, you know, not, they just don't know. So they, they, you know, fill that information void with a vacuum. But you, you guys have created a fantastic rubric that goes in front of the committee, everything comes through, so that you're streamlining, you're making sure everything, you know, is run through one place so everybody knows what's going on. So just thought I would throw that in there as a piece of information.
Thank you. Shannon?
We didn't meet as a committee, but the New Hampshire School Boards Association Board of Directors gave our executive director the authorization to withdraw from the National School Boards Association based on some operational concerns of recent, recent weeks, but definitely the last few years. So there were a, a number of issues that we were having and just a very recent communication they, they made was kind of the last thing we could, we could bear. That said, the New Hampshire School Boards Association is still in every position to advocate on behalf of New Hampshire schools and will be doing so directly with our resources in Washington and not using the association to lighten the load. So there will be a little bit more work from, from the New Hampshire School Boards Association, but we're committed to getting it done.
Are there other states that have also withdrawn?
There's been a handful. I know Pennsylvania, Ohio. I think there's six or seven.
Okay. All right.
Galler's got a tally, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Correspondence. The entire board had received two emails. The first is best categorized as concern for validity of facts given by some members of the public during public comments. The second one was just a thanks for taking input during these times, for also withdrawing from two revolutions contract, and please also consider health and safety of school community and keeping masks in place. I did not receive any emails directly to me. Any other correspondence? All right. Comments? Any comments? Seeing none? That leads us then to the public comments on agenda items. Is there anyone that would like to come up and address the board?
Hi, good evening. Heather Robitaille, Springfield Circle. I just wanted to thank you all for your work and my appreciation to all of you and to all of our educators and our counselors for focusing on our students, our children, and putting them in the best place that they can be through such difficult times. Obviously, we've heard that things back in 2019 weren't quite the way we wanted and we can only imagine more stress means more problems. But I am grateful that you're looking at the social and emotional wellbeing of students and interventions for them from elementary school through high school because the anxiety starts so young. And I, I've seen as a parent, I've experienced it as a human, I'm just thankful for that. And I would ask that when you move forward in your budget considerations and you're looking at social emotional learning, tools given to parents are also really helpful. Fern Sidon just did a meeting, a Zoom meeting with parents utilizing Lynn Lyons, talking about anxiety. I attended that. It was a great and eye-opening session. It gave me a lot of tools as a parent to support my child as a student and as a person being in a better place in the school classroom. So I just encourage you to continue down that path and think of parents as one of those legs on the three stools that need to be there for support. And thank you.
And then Shannon, I think we're just going to rotate while the next person gets ready.
Can do. So next is from Kathy Kumar on Belmont Drive. There were three emails, one with the address, one with the attachment, so sent a picture of the reason for her letter and the third being the letter, which I will read now. I don't know if the school board is aware, why am I struggling? That's why? But the masks that our children are being given from the schools, if they forget theirs are, if they forget theirs, are made by St. Gobain. Given their history, do we want those particular masks on the faces of our children? Have they been tested for PFAS before being given to our children?
Is that it for that one?
Oh, that was it. Yeah, sorry.
All right. Next speaker, please.
Naomi Halter, Ten Everest Drive. This goes way back to the beginning of the meeting, but I wanted to express my gratitude for you recognizing the teachers who've had a lot of years of service in the district. My daughter's kindergarten teacher was actually one of the, I don't know if there were more than one or not, but she was one of the ones who was recognized for more than 40 years with the Merrimack School District. And as we go forward into this budget season, I think it's really important to focus on our teachers and to be sure that we're, we're an attractive district to work for, that we're going to recruit and, and entice the best teachers to come, not only come start in our district, but stay in our district for many years and lend their expertise. My daughter's having a great year. Her teacher is awesome, so we're really thrilled. Thank you.
Shannon?
The next is from Sarah Locke, Coda Road. I want to start by, by again thanking our amazing teachers and administrators for showing up every day, chins up, smiles on and ready to do their best for our children. I also want to voice my support for a task force to study the district's mental health wellness and programming to support our kids both at home and in school from the impact on their learning. From K to 12, this will lead to a better understanding of our dropout rate, testing success, literacy rate and more. And then there was more. I think there was, was that it? Oops. There were versions, so I might have more for you. Let me go back. Oh, there it was. Still from Sarah Locke. I was completely locked into a point Bill Olson began, opening the discussion into student mental health and suicide and suicidal ideation. I'm a suicide survivor. I tried to take my life when I was 12, sixth grade. I told a friend about it when I came back to school after a week in the hospital. The following day, I was accosted by my teacher and 10 girls. The teacher wanted to know if I was telling the truth because that group of girls were upset. Because of that group, because that group of girls was upset. I was never referred to or supported by that school counselor. I've been locked into this conversation and I hope to God things are so much different in our schools now. We can do so much better for our kids and they deserve so much better. And that is all from Sarah Locke. And that is all from Sarah Locke.
Um, next speaker, please.
Chuck Mower, Ford Depot Street. I'd like to talk about money. And I'd like to talk about money in the context of students. Because that is your responsibility. To make sure that students have enough money to pay for the things that they need. I've heard a great deal of lofty talk here about a good many things. But you're not going to realize all of those things unless you actually pay for them. Now, let me get really honest about where the money comes from for our students. Comes from a whole variety of sources. But we always want to say, it's the taxpayer and we have to be good to the taxpayer. And I've heard that repeatedly here tonight, as if it is dogma on the part of school board officials, that somehow or another, we have to always keep in mind to protect the taxpayer. Even though the taxpayer is not fully funding the educational services that we want as a community or that you advise as the vision for education in our community. Let me just take a little sidebar here. If you're really concerned about, um, social, emotional well-being of our students, stop making them beggars for the taxpayer. That's all we do is we send these kids out, uh, to beg for money constantly for the things that they really should have, uh, in their educational, uh, environment. And it doesn't really matter what it is, whether it's a printer or whether it's an extra computer or graphing calculators or even sending the cheerleaders to competition. And they have to go out and have car washes and so on and so forth. Why? If we think all of these activities are actually good for our students, why do we make them beg to fund this because the taxpayer has to be addressed? Now, our tax base is broken into three categories. We have residential, we have industrial and we have commercial. And because taxes have to be equitable across those fields, they all pay by various formulas, the same tax. But industrial and commercial don't get to vote on anything. Nothing at all. So whatever we spend is voted on by a minority of the taxpayers, number one. Industrial, commercial also has taxes built into their cost of doing business. They anticipate what that's going to be. We have such a great history in this community. Uh, Superintendent, uh, Chevanel explained, uh, how long he's been begging for certain things and so forth. I've been begging as well. Um, you know, if, if the governor can come down to Merrimack and petition certain variances for his friends, why are we concerned about the Commissioner of Education, um, not giving us, uh, our own money that we happen to save in an account, uh, to smooth out our experience? I mean, those things just don't really add up. We only have the legitimacy that the legislature gives us. There are things we can do and there are things we can't do. We, we're not full of freedom to act as local residents to do whatever we want. But we can fund education and we haven't been doing a good job at that. I'm here to tell you that. I've told you that before. I've lived in town a very long time. I have watched this school district spiral downward because they always wanted to keep the default budget lower than the other budget. So the taxpayers would okay it at town meeting and nobody really had to sell and work to convince the community on what the school district really needed in that particular year. Well, you know what? That's okay, I guess, once in a while. But when you continually do that, you just keep dropping back and back and back. And that's where we are. And we're always hunting for grants because we can't get money any other way. And it, it, uh, it, it dispossesses the idea of what a grant really is. An incentive to take on an extra program that is beneficial, see the benefit of it and then continue to fund it at the local level. But instead, we look for grants that we can take and when they're done, it's like, wow, we're not gonna do that. It's gonna raise our taxes. I guess I'm a little tired tonight. Because I've said so much of this so often and it seems to have landed on deaf ears. But we have a future in this community. And our school district needs to step up to the plate and fund our future and fund the programs that we need in a contemporary world in Merrimack, New Hampshire. We need to do that. And if you're not going to entertain the idea of having, um, an account to smooth out the experience of, uh, of tax rates, Mr. Chevanel and myself included have been saying for some time, please, make some capital improvement plans that, put them on the warrant. See if people want to set money aside from our surplus to fulfill those wishes, uh, those initiatives, uh, those ideas. But do something. Everything costs money. The students ought not to be held hostage to contrary taxpayers. This is their lives that we're talking about. And doing half the job is not doing any job at all. Look to the future, do something about it, get together, come to a consensus and put something before the community, put something before the budget committee. Because it's not your budget, it's the budget committee's budget. And we need to move forward together to accomplish anything.
Is there any other emails, Shannon?
There were none.
Okay.
Actually, I just gotta read that, so.
All right.
I'll double check.
Any other speakers this evening? Okay. I will entertain a motion to go back into non- pub, oh.
I was giving my emotions.
No, you're okay.
I do wanna, um, say I appreciate and a lot of what Chuck, you know, I think of these things, but also I think the extra money, we should clone the Sterns side and Heather Barker. Spread them around, because I've known, um, Fern since my, my children were in Thornton's Ferry. But, um, the, back to the, the, because I'm, both of my children, all of my, well, not my, my two thousand and three. He was a product of, let's put the new building, the new section on the high school. And he was a junior when we did that. And we still refer to it as the new building, but it was completed in two thousand.
I was there, yeah.
I'm sure, I remember. And, but what I'm, what I would like to say is, um, as for the, the guidance, the, we are down guidance. We've been down guidance, people. There's a difference and I don't know, but I'm a, I am a mental health proponent. I will tell you, I am bipolar. I will tell you that my children have a high chance of, and they do. Those statistics are off. Since COVID, the suicide rate for adolescents, which are twelve to twenty, that's adolescents, have gone up twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent. In girls, they have gone up thirty-two percent. I can tell you that when you have a child that has attempted suicide or thought about suicide, that is not your, that is not Merrimack School District to, to fix. The mental health system in New Hampshire is hideous. I'm from New Jersey and it, it's pretty, it's a lot better because you don't have to go see a social worker, you've got your medicine and a medicine person. Anyway, what, you bring a child, you have to bring them to the emergency room. And you don't want to have to bring a child to an emergency room if it's not Monday through Thursday. Because you don't want to be in an emergency room in any of the hospitals in New Hampshire because they are lined up outside and it's not for mental health. It is for drug addiction, which is probably because of mental health. But that's, that's trickle down. But anyway, what I would like to say is, I think the guidance counselors in our school districts are guidance counselors. They are academic guidance counselors. And I think I've used past, I have, I have, like I said, top five student in the Merrimack High School. He has a five oh four for, but you know, for a mental issue. But thank gosh for the five oh four coordinators. Special ed at every school, every school in Merrimack. People don't realize our taxpayers type, how much money, how many powers, one-on-one powers. People come from other districts because Merrimack has the most amazing special ed department. And that includes my, my, my fifth in the class and my one that I dr, that dragged across the finish line. And you know what? Thank goodness for Merrimack, because I have used Mr. Boardman in pass. I, you know what? I tell people, you, you had problems last year, you call Bill Morris. You have problems, you call Fern. You have problems, you call not Deb Barker, Deb, you know, at the high school. Because the only way you know things is you ask questions. And I have, like I said, three students that are totally different. And I've been asked the question, do they still have the same mother and father? Yes, they do. God bless, because that's what keeps me the way I am, keeping going. But what I'm asking is really seriously, I think because I had Shawna, that my son needed someone at the middle school. And she hooked him up with Mr. Thompson, Mrs. Thompson, because Mrs. Thompson was in charge of the play with Mr. Karen and they connected. But something like Lori said, I think every school should have for, not even just for mental, for just, you know what? I'm having a lot of stress right now because my mother and my father, we've been locked down together. We're fighting all week and I couldn't get a place to study. And it's not just for those kids with the five oh fours. It's not the kids with the IEPs. All the kids are struggling. And if we can get a non-academic, because I subbed in the district, I taught in Patterson, New Jersey for ten years and Hudson and things, I think that more children, you know, not even just suicidal, just to talk, these children have been locked down. The numbers in DCYF are skyrocketing once reporting started. These children don't know where to turn and they are. The teachers in Merrimack are amazing, amazing. From kindergarten to twelfth grade. Like we have amazing teachers that I can't, you couldn't pay them enough. You couldn't pay me enough to do their job. They are, and yeah, no, we don't want to teach them this, we don't want to teach them. The teachers are with students for seven hours a day. I don't spend, I've never, as a stay-at-home mother, spent seven hours with my child, ever. And I was a damn good stay-at-home mother. But what I'm saying is, I think we need to look at the big picture. I think we need to look at the picture from academics. And last thing, uh, you need to bring back skills. You used to have skill, the skill program and the skill class. These children need skills. Like, like I said, I have a child that's looking at all IBS. He has no, he has good study skills, but he has no, you know, um, skills of how to do a checkbook, how to do this, how to learn how to study. Because the kids that didn't do well during, during COVID and during lockdown were kids that aren't not gonna do well in college. Because COVID and remote is what college is all about. That's what college looks like, you know? So that's, I'm sorry. But really, you guys are amazing and the teachers. And if you can get Fern, Deb Parker, clone and pay that extra budget money and spread them all around, we'll be good. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening? Okay. I will go ahead and entertain a motion to go into non-public session per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, A, B and C. Do I have a motion made by Jenna, second by Lori? Lori Peters, how do you vote?
In favor.
Jenna?
In favor.
Shannon?
In favor.
Lori Rothaus?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. That's five zero zero. Thank you and good night.